The regular meeting of the common council of the city of Platteville for Tuesday, August 27th, 2013, and we will start with roll call. Barbara Doss?
I am here.
Barbara Stockhausen?
Yes.
Dick Bonin?
Yes.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Eileen Nichols?
Here.
Patrice Steiner?
Here.
And Mike Den?
Here.
First item on our agenda is consideration of the consent calendar. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to their routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate to the council president if you would prefer separate discussion in action. Minutes from the August 13th, 2013 regular council meeting, payment of bills, appointments to boards and commissions. There are none this evening, but we do have some openings on the Roundtree Gallery Board, as well as the Historic Preservation Commission. So if you're interested, please go to the city website, and there is an easy way to just click on volunteer opportunities, and that will give you information about those two commissions and boards, and we would welcome your participation. Licenses, a reserve Class B combination beer and liquor for German, German, I think, Hernandez, Platteville for premises at 135 East Main Street, Los Amigos. Two is change of agent for Becker's Amino Holdings LLC, LLC, Platteville, Vanessa Berg Agent for premises at 92 East Main Street, Cold Fusion. Next is S&amp;R Ventures LLC, Platteville, Nicholas Pease, Agent for premises at 74 North Second Street, Nix. And then in your packet, there is one or two-year operators licenses for premises licensed to traffic in fermented malt beverages and intoxicating liquors. Is there a motion?
I move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, and we'll vote. Doss?
Yes.
Stockhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have four individuals who have indicated a desire to speak this evening under citizen's comments, observations, and petitions. We ask that you limit your remarks to five minutes, and this is for information only for the council. The council will not be responding to your presentation. We have Gene Weber, who would like to speak about the Platteville Community Arboretum, as well as Chris Wright. So if you two would step up to the microphone, please, and give your name and address.
My name is Gene Weber from 1285 Union Street.
Christopher Wright, 910 Seamer Street.
As noted, my name is Gene Weber, and I am with the Platteville Community Arboretum. My esteemed associate here is Chris Wright, one of several early visionaries for the trail, past president and active leader within the Platteville Community Arboretum. We're here to thank city government for the $50,000 challenge match from impact fees on behalf of the Platteville Community Arboretum and the citizens of Platteville. When you advised us in December that our, that of the $50,000 match, challenge match, our board was like, wow, great, oops, we have to raise $50,000. Can we do this? For many of our board members, this was really an out-of-the-box challenge. Fundraising is not even, is not easy, even when the cause to do one is in significant ma, demand by the community. Over 140 citizens and organizations responded with donations from $10 to $10,000. A great community effort achieved the $50,000 match, thanks to all. This will enable a complete bridge replacement east of Culvers on the trail, a bridge relocation, and connect two trail segments adjacent to Valley Road, and it will allow us to reroute the trail around the stairs that are there now. UWP students completed the design, and with fundraising completed this past week, Delta III is reviewing the design, and full installation will be done early in 2014. From this effort, we have learned that many in Platteville want a paved and lighted trail. Hence, what is next for PCA? We intend to write grants, grant requests to pave and light the PCA trail from the UWP campus to Mineral Street, and after that, potentially do the same for the DNR trail from Mineral Street on the old railroad bed to the Walmart Menards area. PCA now would like to request the city of Platteville collaborate on maintenance for future PCA trails that are paved with concrete or asphalt. Specifically agree that PCA will be responsible for the trail sides, and the city be responsible for maintaining the trail's surface, ceiling, et cetera, and repairs and/or replacement needed due to flood, washout, or just long-term wearout. The reasons for the request are greater demand by the citizens for a paved trail. It's liked by bikers, walkers, and businesses, safer and easier when biking or walking. Also, PCA leadership feels it does not have the financial strength as a $15,000 per year organization to commit to maintaining paved surfaces and repair or replacement of washouts or wearouts. Our organization is not a large one financially. And then furthermore, a collaborative maintenance agreement would enable PCA to use the current $100,000 that we have in matching funds, as matching funds, on certain grant requests for paving the trail. And now is the time to take the advantage of that, because we have to get the additional grant requests with matching funds done before we start the 2014 work, or we'll lose the advantage of the, of match, of those matching funds. Before, each of you is a draft collaborative agreement for you to consider. You have also been given letters of support from Safe Routes, Chamber, UWP, a developer, a philanthropist, and a banker. We would appreciate knowing in the near future if you view this as another step for effective collaboration within Platteville. Any questions for Chris and I?
The only issue that came up with the Safe Routes Committee was snowmobile use.
Yes, and we have, well, actually, the snowmobile group was a contributor to this effort, and Bill Zeta, who's the president of the local snowmobile group, and I had a conversation, and what the snowmobile group is after, and what they asked of PCA, is between UWP and Mineral Street, the only access that thereafter is across the new bridge that we're going to build. And when we had that designed, we designed that in mind.
That's the bridge east of Culvers?
Yes, correct.
What about the other bridge? Sorry. The one you're moving?
The one we're moving? Boy, I don't think that would ever hold a snowmobile at all, would it, Chris?
No, and they don't plan to take their snowmobiles on that road, anyway.
Yeah.
All right, thank you very much. We will definitely take a look at this and hopefully get back to you soon.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We also have Pat Clare, who would like to speak on the Area Ambulance Committee. We have that on a work session, so I'm going to ask Mr. Clare to go ahead and give his comments now. If you would give your name and--
Sure. My name is Pat Clare. I'm the chairman of the Townes-Melzer, and the reason I'm here is to just speak against the proposed merger, or the Southwest Health Center taking over the ambulance service for the city of Platteville, and changing it to a paramedic service. With that changeover, we're going to lose a lot of things, and I'd like to list a few of them. First of all, one of the things that are going to be lost is the opportunity for volunteerism. There are many in this community that have given a fair portion of their lives to serving here and being part of the EMS service, and that would be an awful thing to lose. Also, there are a lot of training opportunities that would be lost, and also there would be a lot of wages, wage opportunities lost for students at UWP and, you know, in our city here. Brian Allen, the director, spoke eloquently at the ambulance meeting about, you know, how well they're doing and the surplus of volunteers that they have right now. And, and what is so amazing to me is the fact that we are going to receive a new ambulance here in September, and it's going to be at no cost to the, to those that, you know, will be served by it. And that's because of the way it's been ran. The Townes-Melzer and six other towns are part of this effort, and we are very thankful for everything that's put into it, for the, for the town's, or the city's share of what's going on with that. And it's very well organized, and it's self-supporting, and it's really an unparalleled service in our area. I guess our town, you know, was, was part of establishing this and, you know, creating the infrastructure. You guys own the building, but we've been, we've paid our share. And if the hospital takes that over, we know our share will increase, and I really doubt that will be better served than by the service that is now in place. And I just can't see any real good reason for doing it. So that is what I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Again, this is on later for a work session. Next is Darrell Fisher. I could give your name and your address, please, Darrell.
Darrell Fisher with Queen Bee Radio. I live at 118 South Main Street in Cuba City. Queen Bee Radio has teamed up with Operation Troop Aid to send 500 care packages to those serving overseas in our U.S. military. These packages will be assembled, assembled on Labor Day afternoon at UW-Platteville, hopefully going to be starting a little bit after 2:00. Members of the campus and the community who want to help are encouraged to stop by. The items will be set up on the campus on the west lawn that's between Williams Field House and the Pioneer Student Center. Volunteers can basically move down the line, piecing together a care package. Process takes just a couple minutes to create a single package, and volunteers can keep going through that line as many times as they want to help us reach our goal. This is a great opportunity with Operation Troop Aid as a part of the activities that have been planned with the campus during their Welcome Back Weekend. And when the care packages are all done, they will be shipped directly to Afghanistan. Queen Bee Radio want to thank some of our local donors who've made a monetary donation to assist in the shipping costs. Platteville Area, Platteville Area Chamber of Commerce, Platteville Main Street Program, Platteville Kiwanis Club, Platteville Business Incubator, the Platteville Quota Club, and Lancaster VFW. So, anyone who wants to come out on Labor Day Monday, a little bit after 2:00, we'll be there through the evening, right up until about the concert starts around 7:00 in the fieldhouse. So, thank you.
Thank you. Larry, I think that you have something you would also like to tell?
Recently, the city of Platteville has been honored by the City of Platteville Main Street Program. We received a certificate of appreciation from the Main Street Program for helping, excuse me, let me read it to you. In recognition of the dedication, support, and service to the Platteville Main Street Program, we would like to present City of Platteville with the Certificate of Appreciation. In our hearts and minds, you will always be part of the Main Street family. So we received that from the Main Street Program, and I wanted the council to know. And then I should also bring to your attention that the Main Street Program has nominated the city of Platteville for a 2013 Main Street Program Award. We were nominated, and I believe that award will be handled in October, toward the later part of October, we'll find out. So I hope to report back positive news, but certainly a big thank you to the Main Street Program in Platteville.
Thank you. We'll go on to reports, the committee reports, where in your packet, Area Ambulance Committee from, actually, these, the first two are from 2012, so we have Steiner and Bonin after them. Any comments from either one of you?
Why, why are the, why are the reports so late?
I don't know why we didn't receive them earlier, but these were, I believe, also made available at the Area Ambulance Committee meeting that was recently held, Ken, and so they're included in our packet at this time. The redevelopment authority, Doss?
That's from June, nothing new on that, although we did have a redevelopment authority meeting last night, and I have sent a message to the city manager and the council president requesting action on some parking issues at the, in the next two or three weeks.
Safe Routes Committee, Steiner?
Nothing.
Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee, Killian?
No additions.
Water and Sewer Commission, Steiner, Killian, or Bonin?
No additions.
No additions, all right. Other reports? We'll start this evening with the IT report. Larry?
Yes, I'd like to introduce TJ Carter and Amber Aurora. They are the consultants that the city of Platteville hired to, to help investigate our IT services, and they are from Compunet International.
Good evening, and we appreciate the opportunity to work with the city and present the information. This report, yes, sir?
We have another report about information technology. Who wrote this one?
We did, and that is the formal report. What we're doing today is--
There are two of them.
Correct. What we're doing today is presenting a kind of overview summary, call it an executive summary, and try to present it in terms that's maybe a little more understandable than those that live and breathe this on a daily basis like myself and my partner do. I am really passionate about it, but I'm told that I often get people lost if I'm not very careful, so this is my attempt to try to, to just summarize it for you.
You're the author of this one also?
Uh, myself and my team, yes.
Okay.
And that you'll find is a lot more detail than what we're presenting just today. But really, when you, you know, you get to it, the, the gist of what we're presenting today, it can be boiled down into a few pretty salient points, and that's what we're trying to do. You know, so first off, we were, were engaged here to really do an assessment of IT, and we take a very broad view of it, not just the equipment, but also how an organization approaches IT, manages IT, and, and works with it on a day-to-day basis. So really, what we looked at, in the first slide you'll see there, is the scope of the assessment, just wanted to revisit that quickly. We looked at the hardware and software currently used. This is the computers, the networking gear, the, the software on a day-to-day basis. We looked at how things were architected. I know the PCAN network has recently been implemented, and, you know, that is a big step forward for you, and we talk a little bit about that in the, in the assessment there, the details. We look at how you budget and manage IT, and, and how you approach it from a day-to-day basis. We're big believers that if you don't manage something, you're not going to get anything from it. So it's important to understand the approach you take to that. We look at IT support processes, and this is how you take care of the IT users, because again, it's very important that people are getting the support they need. This stuff is not always trivial anymore. So finding the right training and, and hand-holding can be very important, especially if you're trying to transition and make a change in how you, you leverage IT going forward. We looked at your network desktop and server security. We looked at disaster recovery and backup type things, and we looked at how you procure your IT and, and how you approach and work with vendors. So it's a very broad perspective on what we looked at. You know, the assessment methodology really was, we, we touched a lot of things. We touched just about every computer we could, could find, and sucked out of that as much information as we could using tools we have to figure out what's installed there and whatnot. Plus, we did a lot of hands-on, we took pictures, we visited just about each location out there. Interviews were held. City managers were talked to, and Larry himself. Larry also volunteered a couple of the older folks here that we did talk to personally and got their perspective on IT. And we did have some informal conversations. We do a lot of work in the Platteville area, at the University of the School District, the hospital, so we've got a lot of people we work with on a day-to-day basis. Some were aware of this effort, but, you know, some we just asked about their experience working with City Hall and just things of that nature that kind of came into some of the results we did here. The findings of the assessment really are, what we saw is that there are really three to four different approaches today being taken in the city. We've got this police department and city hall, and, and, you know, there's actually a third dimension to that, I think, which is everybody else that isn't the fire department and library kind of fall under there. But when we look at what's going on there, they, they kind of follow the same template, but we would kind of say that, you know, the, the police department probably gets, you know, the most attention, and probably because they have the most needs. They get a lot of system requests and requirements pushed down by the state and county that they need to respond to. We have the fire department, which is doing kind of their own thing. They've got a group of volunteers. You guys probably remember a CIP program you approved, it must have been last year, that funded a project for them, some $27,000. And they're largely self-sufficient group of volunteers, taking care of, of themselves and doing what they do. And then we have the library, and, you know, I will say that the library has probably some of the better practices we saw. They do have a halftime, or I believe, part-time staffer, but they do make goals and objectives, and are very deliberate and consistent about the kinds of things they're doing. So there is, you know, some of the things I say are varied degrees across the organization. But, you know, generally, what we're seeing here is a very reactive organization. People are reacting to problems and fixing breaks, you know? There's not a lot of proactive nature. And someone ad hoc, which means, you know, we're focusing on one thing at a time that comes up. You know, the police department will have a program, they'll have some grant money, and they'll focus on what that grant money is going to fund. The county will say, you need to do this and support this, so they'll focus on doing that. So there's a lot of one-offs going on that are kind of, have a lot of value, but again, they're not necessarily all being taken into the context of, whoops, sorry, larger strategy and plan that, that might be out there. And again, there's a lot more details and recommendations in the assessment. We're not talking here, because we kind of want to get to more interesting stuff. Now, before we do that, though, there is a model that's been put out there by the Gartner Group, and they're a very well-regarded nationwide organization that focuses on IT systems. And they have what they call a IT Infrastructure and Operations Maturity Model. On the very left end of this, and they, they have four different col, or rows here, they talk about people, processes, technology, and how you manage it as a business, and they've got about the six columns. On the very left, they call it survival, which is pretty much, you know, there's no organizational focus on IT infrastructure and operations, there's no formal IT processes for IT infrastructure and operations, there's no formal strategy or execution on technology investments. You know, kind of what we heard is we put proposals together to the city council, they say no. So we put it together again, and they say no. And then one, sooner or later, they come back and say, okay, we'll, we'll fund that initiative. Maybe that's formal. I, I think there's probably other ways that, that might be more effective. And then again, no real formal IT business management. So we look at you on this continuum, we kind of, you know, I should go to the right, I guess. On the right side, IT is seen as a business partner. IT is seen as really supporting the key initiatives of an organization. If you guys were a commercial business, a lot of times, a real way to look at that is IT becomes not an expense to you anymore, but something that is actually generating return on investment, profit, maybe. There are things you can do that actually generate cash flow with, you know, the right investment in technology. So we kind of, you know, have you right now in that survival mode, that farthest left of the column, and there's plenty of opportunities to move forward as you, as you do go forward. Now, when we do go forward, the first question for us is, what are we trying to accomplish? And, and the first question is, what do we want to accomplish as an organization? Would, would the city like to see come out of IT? Because it may be completely fine that we're not going to do anything. You know, I mean, it may be fine to say, we're just not, we're pencil and paper, and IT is just not important to what we're doing. It adds no value whatsoever. On the other hand, there are organizations, you know, the Googles of the world, where if it's not IT, it's, it's not happening. So again, and somewhere in that continuum, we can talk about a straw man that we put out there. On top of that, though, there's an IT system strategy. And this is kind of like saying, are we going to build trains? Are we going to build airplanes? How are we going to get where we're going? And there's different approaches we can take to that, and we'll just real quickly visit those. So from a strategy perspective, the business goals, and I call this a straw man, because this is, you know, your guys' purview to decide what kinds of things you want to do. But I would say that, you know, some of the things that we think from our experience working would be, you know, maybe add transparency to city operations. I will say that pulling some information was, at times, not easy. And, you know, it was available, no question, but it was a matter of filtering through files and getting stacks of paper that would then have to be digested. And so again, there is definitely the information there, but it's tricky. There's, there's always efficiencies. We see plenty of opportunities to increase some efficiencies in city operations. One I really think is important these days is, you know, add some relevancy to that next generation of citizens, okay? This is something that, you know, I mean, all the kids today are just living in this world, and, and we shouldn't fight it. We should figure out how we leverage that technology, how we can add some relevancy, so that they feel like, you know, we're talking the same language they, they are. And, you know, one of the thoughts would be, you know, can we be a 724 city or 24/7 city? And, and open up the doors and engagement as, you know, on, on a 724 basis, opposed to showing up on 8 to, 8 to 5, Monday to Thursday. And then, you know, maybe just create a more sustainable, economically competitive city. All things that I think can, can matter. Again, it's kind of a laundry list we came up. We did a quick review with Larry, but ultimately, you know, it's a conversation I think the city council needs to have on, on how they want to do it. Now, my assumption is always we're going to move forward, okay? And, and that's important to me. And actually, before I do that, I want to do an example real quickly of how things could be different. And I didn't write this out, because it's kind of anecdotal, and I didn't want people to sit there and say, well, that's not how we do things, per se. But the water disconnect process is a process we stumbled upon where it's a very manual process. And I don't know all the steps, but I know people have to show up in the water department, they have to fill out a form, I guess they can send it in, too, if they download it off the internet. It then kind of gets put on a card. That card goes into a card file by the date it's supposed to happen, and I think another card goes somewhere else and gets filed away elsewhere. And the day it happens, someone goes and pulls that card out, and then they're like, oh, I got to go turn off this guy's water. They may get there, and the guy's like, what are you turning my water off for? Well, you know, it's here, and they turn off the water and go away, and the guy's real angry. The guy might, you know, might have wanted to keep water on. So one could envision, you know, where people go to a webpage, and they, you know, or, or there's a notification. A lot of the disconnects, I understand, are voluntary, people are leaving and whatnot, but you, you go to a website, you register the request, that site immediately shows up on a counter. The morning it's supposed to happen, the dispatcher doesn't have to do anything, the guy who's in charge of it shows up, and he's got a little iPad-like device, and not only does it tell him where he's going, it tells him what order to do it, because it's more efficient that way, maybe not a big deal in a site, city like Platteville. He gets there, and TJ's mad, you can't turn my water off, because now this is not voluntary, this is unvoluntary. Don't do it. Well, if you can give me a credit card, I'll take your money, and I won't have to do it. Gets credit card, swipes it on the top of the little card reader, he gets his, the money's paid, water doesn't get turned off, and off he goes. Today, if the water gets turned off and needs to get turned back on, he has to go back out, right? So again, this is probably not super well-articulated, but I think you kind of get what I'm saying. We, we can do some things here to be more efficient in how we do things, and add some service to the customer, the clientele, the residents, that probably would be well-received out there. And all this could then be tracked, and all the metrics in place, and we can watch what's going on there and, and that kind of stuff. So, you know, it's just something we saw, and we always, when we see two pieces of paper go in different directions, it's like a purchase order in duplicate, and I got these little hairs that go, you know? That's a process that we should be more effective at, at doing. Now, when we talk about the system strategy, you know, I will tell you that we can take your old systems, and we can clean them up and make them work. But the analogy I'm going to present is that's kind of like taking the old steam engine and really making it a beautiful refurbished steam engine, but it's still a steam engine, okay? And, you know, today, people are driving these bullet trains, and bullet trains take a little different infrastructure than a steam engine does. More importantly, or maybe not more importantly, but we're already dreaming of these hyperloops, if you've seen it, that loop between LA and San Fran that goes 700 miles an hour. You know, it's moving, and it's, IT is always moving. So I'm not sure the strategy we should take is to refurbish a steam engine. We should probably be looking at moving into at least a bullet train, or, you know, because it is pretty common technology that's out there today. So-- So the next thing, we get to what's going on in the system level that might guide that decision. What are people doing? Well, the first thing we see is, you know, PC sales themselves are pretty much plummeting. People, you know, it's about 22% reduction in a year-over-year business. Tablet sales are growing faster and faster. So again, it's a much more mobile community than it used to be. What we call system architecture, this is how these pieces are put together. It's changing dramatically to more and more people aren't building these systems on-site, but they're hosting up in the cloud. Amazon, everybody knows for buying stuff, but they're also one of the biggest providers of cloud computing resources in the world. And you can go up there and you can host the systems you host on-site here and pay as you use them, okay? It's not a fixed monthly fee, it's per cycle, per bit, per bandwidth, kind of like a water meter. So if you use it, you pay for it; if you don't, you don't. So it's a very dynamic model. More importantly, one of the things, or not more importantly, but one of the other notes is the fastest-growing segment of this marketplace of what we call cloud computing is office applications, creating documents, spreadsheets, presentations, collaborating with your colleagues and friends. Two big programs out there today, people might have heard of Google Docs, huge in education, and now Microsoft is out there with what they call their Office 365, which they're very aggressively pushing out there. And they're very, very successful things out there. So we really think that when we look at, you know, the system strategy, the first thing we do think is that, you know, a shared services model where the various organizations of cities work a little more closely together would make sense. One of the things the fire department paid for as part of their grant is some storage, because they have incident reports, and they have a little box they put in at the fire department, and they're going to put a little box, I guess, in the police department to back it up. Well, one of the things the police department has a need for is storage for incident reports, video and, you know, the video cameras they're going to have. So why aren't we building that out once for both as opposed to separately? That's kind of a synergy that I think might be out there. I do think there's an opportunity for mobile client devices. They are much cheaper than PCs, and many of your users today consume information. They don't generate it themselves, and if you're a consumer, that tablet is a great way to go about doing that. Moving more toward the cloud and hosted, delivered applications, one of the things we saw was there wasn't a lot of thought to disaster planning. Well, today, if you lose your data center, I don't know what you do. In the future, if you lose your data center, you go to a coffee shop, get on the internet, and most of your files and email is there, you know, so you continue to pick up like you never, you know, you never miss a beat. So it can be a huge enabler of doing that, and it can cause, it goes across a lot of the different findings we found. We do think that workflow-enabled processes are important, things like that water disconnect process and starting to do that, there's a lot of benefit to it. And online document and storage management, I would say that, you know, we do see a lot of paper, and we've got a lot in front of us today. You know, that is a huge cost for an organization and do think that moving that way. And again, we call these straw mans, because if we were sitting on the city council, we might be doing this, but this is your guys' city to decide where we want to go with it. So the roadmap, what we would recommend today, and again, there's a fair amount of thought that puts into this, and we have two columns we look at here, the people and the processes and the systems and solutions, and we've got like four phases here. From a people and process perspective, you know, the first thing is supporting the people today. There's not, I think, a lot of support to some of the solutions out there. And if we're going to transform or going to move forward, we're going to have to have folks there that can answer people's question and make them comfortable with the new solutions that are out there. And just make them comfortable today because things don't work well today, okay? So if we're going to get them on a bullet train, and the bullet train keeps falling off the tracks, they might not want to get on. So let's make sure we got the right engineers keeping those tracks running for them. Some communication. If we're going to do a transformation, again, let's make sure they understand why, and don't threaten them with it, but engage them in it. On the system side, we really think one of the first things we want to do is some system stability. Get the system running again so people can rely on it. But again, we don't want to just get the steam engine running, because that's not really going to be stable long-term. So we would suggest that the city uses something called Citrix Server that is very unreliable today, that, you know, that environment go away, and we maybe transition the city into a hosted solution. We do feel for commercial or more professional organizations, the Microsoft Office 365 is a much better solution than Google, and it's very, very cost-effective. Plus, it provides capabilities beyond that that we can talk a little bit about in a minute. A little bit of network restructuring might be in order. When PECAN came in, every one of your different facilities had its own separate network, so they were kind of islands on themselves. Work was done informally to kind of merge them all into the city, but it's important when you start to look at various entities and the use of network traffic that we start to drive, divide it into different highways. And we do that for security, so keep the security of the police system separate from the security of maybe the museum. Or the park and pool. If the park and pool is putting up a wireless access point, if it's not done right, they could get right into the city's core systems, financial systems, police department systems. So doing some structuring there, and Dan Dargal actually was the one that put that on the list, that, you know, was it his network, he would do a little of that. I do think that wireless would be a nice step, it could be done very inexpensively. Someone asked about, you know, opportunities to work with the school district and university. They both have very robust architecture. They could extend their architecture, probably a school would be best because they're a little tighter to you, where they're actually hosting the controller. And now, all you worry about is the radios that go out there, greatly reducing the cost to the city, and that would all be enabled by the PECAN. In Phase Two, you know, the first one is really stability and building a base. Now, there's a little bit more of that. On the people and process side, it's time to really look at how you manage IT, and we call that governance process. A good example of governance, if you're going to do GIS, people said, "We've got all these requests for different layers." Well, where do we start? Which layer do we do first? So what's the process to make that decision? And that's really what governance is. What's the process to make an investment? I provided a sample of a governance process as part of the broader report. It doesn't have to be as complicated as it looks, but it's just a process to make decisions on where you invest in IT. And then some more training. We've supported them, now let's train them on the solutions they're using. And then on the bottom here, we've got disaster recovery and continuity plans. You know, we see all these terrible stories of Joplin and other places, and I can only imagine that, you know, if something like that were to occur in a city like any city, the needs of the constituents go way up. They're not just looking for the everyday thing, they're looking for way beyond what you normally provide. And if you don't have any of your normal systems to work with and can't even, you know, I mean, I think it's going to put you at a big disadvantage in serving that need. On a technology side, we see maybe implementing that joint storage between the cities so we can get a handle on the documents and the incident reports and all that kind of stuff. And then moving into wireless, maybe a Phase Two where we start to extend from city facilities out into public spaces. As we go into Phase Three, you know, a couple of these are now moving in. We've built some infrastructure that I think will support the CASL upgrade and the documentation management program, and we should probably have GIS here too. The governance process is in place now, right? So that can help us make decisions on these bigger projects that need to come forward. And again, a program like this, a roadmap, you know, the way we look at it, you do one phase, you step back, see what's happening in the world, and then you readjust and reshuffle, and Phase Two and Three may change. So again, this is very logical, but there are reasons it may go there. Phase Four, we call city apps. And app, city apps to us are these small, little workflows like the water disconnect process, like other things, that aren't big and expensive, but are small and focused, that can really add a lot of value. And the key here is apps today, you need to think of what an app, you know, when you think of an enterprise app, you think of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars maybe, or tens of. When you think of an app app, you're thinking a buck. And the same difference here, these are little inexpensive things that can add great value. And the reason we really like Microsoft 365 is it also comes with a component they call SharePoint, that is a platform for us to build these little things. So we can build little workflow-oriented things that plug right into calendars, plug right into emails, plug right into, you know, whatever, and then take a series of steps through it. And the last slide is real quickly, just a little illustration of how we see the city apps and why it makes sense. We see that, you know, this lovely curve, and at the bottom, we have the users impacted and the project cost, okay? CASL and GIS are going to have pretty significant costs, okay? But they're going to impact a lot of people. On the other hand, we've got smaller impact and smaller costs for the city apps. But if we consider that the value is the area under the curve, if we add them all up, it's equal. So if we're not doing, if we're only doing one and not the other, we're leaving some opportunity on the table is what it comes down to. And again, these are things that are weeks to months to get done, not months to years to get done, okay? But they're very focused little things that can make a little difference to people. So anyways, that's kind of where we are with it. I will admit, we're, you know, real passionate about the use of technology, and all this stuff is possible and can be made affordable. This isn't stuff that costs millions and millions of dollars typically and can be done in, especially with governance in place, in an orderly, managed fashion. Questions?
Any questions, anybody?
So a next step, if we, after accepting the report, are you, I mean, would there be an indication that we would need to hire a person, hire more consulting? I mean, do we have internally the people who can?
Well, no, that's a great question, and I think what we see that a lot of organizations struggle with, especially when they're a little smaller, is that you can certainly hire a person, but you get a guy that's a jack-of-all-trades or a gal. And what we often see in those environments is someone that doesn't want to encourage change. They want to encourage stability. And anytime you add change, it knocks things off kilter a little bit. And a lot has to do with resources and whatnot, and again, expertise on this kind of a thing. I think it's important that you have someone that is a champion and a primary kind of has a little bit of heart for it. We do a lot of work personally with a lot of the smaller school districts that have the same kinds of problems, and, you know, and again, it's getting very complex in the schools today because every kid's walking in with a device. The Plattville schools here are in great shape, they've got Bill and Dan that are well-under, but they're big. They're the biggest in the CISA III, as I understand it. We also work with the Seneca School District, and they just like, help us. So I do think that, you know, a combination probably makes sense for you. And even the bigger schools we work with, when they cross the bridge and start to do some of this, have made the decision, "We can't do it all, so we need, you know, some internal resources that we can make sure we're managing it properly, but we also need help with some of this technical expertise."
Yeah, go ahead.
We're considering budget at this point, and in, my recollection is right in the CIA, in our capital improvement plan budget, there are some expenditures for software upgrades, information technology upgrades. I have a...
Well, no, I, there are some. I know the CASL program's one of them, and GIS is one of them, and both of the, CASL does need to be upgraded, I can tell you that for sure. I would say that's a very needed investment, and there'd be a ton of value from a GIS system for you too. The key here, in my mind, is not that you shouldn't do them or not, I think you probably should, but the key is, how do you manage the projects to get what you want out of them?
Right.
With your company, besides also doing this, do you also work with people and help them or do the work, upgrades, recommendations? Tell us what, if we were to purchase something, excuse me, purchase some things, would you people assist with that, or do you actually do that for us and install it, or?
Yeah, no, we focus on, we've got relationships with several organizations where we manage their IT environment completely. I don't know, I mean, Roundtree down on campus, we actually outfitted that with their network, and we have a resource on staff that actually provides the ResNet support because that's not on campus. We also do that with a group of schools up in the Twin Cities area that are, you know, just bringing in the devices and trying to do that stuff. And our focus is simple for those environments, especially the schools, which is, we're not teachers, you guys aren't network engineers, so we'll make sure that stuff's working, you guys make sure the kids get a good education, so. Yeah, so we do, we do projects. CISA III, we did a, our architecture, infrastructure upgrade for them and that kind of stuff, and provide ongoing support services, but...
You also mentioned a couple of times the PECAN network and then our now connectivity with the school district and with the university, and you mentioned Dan Dargal's name in, and then, of course, Dan and Bill from the school district. Do you see opportunities, do you see greater opportunities for collaboration across the three?
I think there is. I mean, I do think there is, they're great resources. I mean, I will say this, first off, Dan Dargal is a, you know, a saint to this city, and we really need to throw him a party for the efforts he's put in on PECAN, and frankly, he supports what we do, and we've been a long time vendor up at the university. So you're not going to probably get more out of him because he gives it all, and he's really good at it. But no, there might be. I mean, I do see PECAN as a huge community asset, and, you know, with PECAN, and I know PECAN is limited to public organizations, but with PECAN comes other fiber running up along the highway, that middle mile, they call it, that does bring affordable, high-speed internet connectivity that we could drop into places like the industrial park very easily. That's a huge enabler. And, you know, for the Roundtree, we were able to bring in its own 10-megabit internet circuit without going through the local providers and sometimes, yeah, you know, what's the right word for it? They hold you hostage when there's an only source, mind you. So we were able to do that very cost-effectively. Our monthly charge is about half of what the, what the other ones was because of those kinds of capabilities. So that opens up all kinds of interesting opportunities.
One of the things that you did not look at in this IT assessment, I don't believe, is our telephone service.
We didn't. We did briefly, I mean, at an outside level. You know, there is opportunity to change your telephone system, there's no question about it. The problem right now is CenturyLink still really controls the market. For example, we just flipped the telephone network down at Roundtree from CenturyLink to a what's called voice-over-IP system. Cut their bill, what, two-thirds? The problem is CenturyLink wouldn't let them have their phone numbers. So in order to call Roundtree Hall, you have to call...
1-800.
Well, 1-800, but the nearest local number was Dodgeville, you know, which they didn't think made sense. If a local Plattville person is trying to call Roundtree, why am I calling Dodgeville? So what they opted to do instead was an 800 number. So those opportunities are out there, and, you know, the beauty is, if you do get hit by, you know, a catastrophe, wherever you plug your phone in, you're answering city calls, okay? So again, it's a very powerful and enabling technology that, again, addresses a lot of the recommendations we had in there. But phone numbers matter, you know, so maybe you guys in your agreements with CenturyLink can find a way to squeeze those loose, but, you know, maybe you keep a main number and it forwards to the new system for X amount of time until you do it and provide 800 numbers, so that's what the Roundtree did. But there is definitely opportunity to save them.
I know there's opportunities for saving. Before I was on this council, I was on the school board. That's why I know Dan and Bill very well, and we implemented VoIP at the school district at that point in time.
Yeah.
And I can't tell you how much money we saved.
Yeah.
All right, so we have great information. Thank you so much.
I did leave my card if anybody asks questions. I know the report is probably pretty, you know, but I...
I think it'll probably be a work session again for us, but it's really good information, and as you said, we need to look at upgrading.
I think there's plenty of opportunity, and it's all, in my mind, it's all good, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other reports in our packet include the building inspection report, department progress reports. Any questions from any of the council members on those reports? Seeing none, we'll move into action items. The first is amending the official traffic map, installation of no parking taxi stand. Forward?
Yes.
We discussed this at the last meeting. This is part of the council's project to implement alcohol recommendations to reduce the impacts of overconsumption of alcohol. The idea here is to authorize a, authorize signage for no-parking taxi stand, 9:00 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. on the east and west sides of North Second Street in the first stalls north of East Mineral Street. As you can see on my amended, we have, I had originally talked about Plattville shared ride, but that's, that's a separate issue that we'll, we'll deal with at a different time. So, this would allow any taxi service to, to use those stalls during that period of time for, to serve patrons.
Comments or a motion?
I move to approve ordinance number 1318.
Second. We have a motion in the second. Is there any further discussion? We'll vote. Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item B is Resolution 1332, authorizing submission of a community development block grant application for the library block redevelopment.
Sure. In your packet is a Resolution 1332. The council is obligated to approve this resolution if we are to make the grant application submitted to the state. Cindy Yagi is present here this evening. She was the consultant hired to do the grant application, if anyone has questions for her.
Any questions?
I have a question for you, Larry.
Yeah?
We discussed this a little bit in length and said, why do we want to do it for $5 million when you're only looking at needing $3,950,000, something like that, correct, at this time? Have we discussed it? I'm sorry, am I looking at the wrong one?
Yeah, it's $500,000.
Yes, I am. Scratch it. I am sorry. I saw the five and Jones.
Yep, we'll get to that one. Any, any questions at all concerning Resolution Number 1332 regarding the library block grant application?
So, this would cover the entire block, from Chestnut to Pine to Elm to Main. Is that correct?
Yes.
But means, for example, if, like, the First English Church has a parking lot, that would be part of the redevelopment?
Yes, that's correct. The redevelopment has had discussions, or will be having discussions, with the church as to the parking lot. It's anticipated that a parking sharing agreement could be reached, or the parking lot might be, we may be able to move it to another location.
So, it will be discussed, it hasn't been finalized?
Oh, that's correct, yes.
Motion to adopt Resolution 1332, authorizing submission of a community development block grant application in the amount of $500,000 for the library block redevelopment project.
I'll second that.
We have a motion in the second? We'll vote. Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is Resolution 1333, amending the City of Plattville's employee handbook, employee benefits, group medical insurance.
Larry wants to table that, doesn't he?
Yep. If I may, there should be a report in front of the council members that looks like this. That was received this afternoon. You can see the report is quite lengthy. This was the legal opinion, I believe, the city council asked for, and given the length of the legal opinion, I would like to ask the city council to table the issue so that I can address some of the concerns this, the law firm had regarding implementation. I haven't had a chance to review the entire document, and I would like to take it back to staff committee to have them review it and decide what direction they want to go.
How much time are you talking, Larry?
I would like at least a month. In the meantime, though, I do want to let you know that, at the city council's request, I did ask Tricor representative Brent Straka to be present this evening for answering any of your questions regarding our insurance company. The, we had discussion about the pool dropping and how that could impact rates in the future, and so I had asked Brent to be here this evening. Are you, you interested in fielding some questions? Okay.
Brent, if we could have you come up to the microphone, please? And just again, for our record-keeping, to identify yourself.
Absolutely. My name is Brent Straka, I'm with Tricor Insurance.
And Brent has been on the city's staff health insurance committee from the beginning to help guide us and, and advise us.
Brent?
Yes, sir.
Quick question for you. At what point do, or does it become more expensive to have fewer people on the insurance? And are we close to that?
No, you're not close to it. It's an interesting question because, let's say, five people leave, and they're all five people who are unhealthy, then it's good for you. If five people leave and they're all young, then it could impact you. So, it's really tough for me to say, what is the financial impact until you tell me who's going to lead the plan? You're big enough right now that if we anticipate that we have five to 10 people that may take the waiver, you're still a big enough pool that I don't see an impact on it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Brent, do you provide our experience on a yearly basis to city staff?
To administration, but not to the entire city staff.
So, to administration?
Yep.
You provide?
Yep.
And that would be available, that's not confidential information, it could be available to council?
Yes, within reason. And there's certain circumstances where perhaps there is one major claim, and because of the type of the claim, it's very easy to tell who that employee is, that'd be a situation where we would strip that data out and not allow it because of HIPAA. But general claim information, how much you paid in premiums, how much you had for costs, claim information like that is, is certainly something we'll share with them, and then they can share as needed.
Now, Tricor is the agent, but not the insurer?
Correct, yep, that's correct. We're the agent and the broker. Right now, you're currently with two health insurance carriers, and you have a dual choice. One is with Dean Health Systems, Health Plans out of Madison, the other's with Medical Associates out of Dubuque, Iowa.
And so, do we bid those every, do you bid those every year?
We bid them depending on the situation. There, this area is a unique situation in that we don't have a ton of carriers down here, so we only have a handful of employers. And through some of the meetings that Larry talked about, we went out and actually surveyed the employees this year, and I said, what, you know, do you like the carriers you have? Do you anticipate changing? And the results were very positive, that people liked the carriers you have. There are certain circumstances, we made a change about three years ago, where we went from Unity to Medical Associates simply because the cost. So, as things come up, we certainly look at them. Health, health insurance and the providers is kind of, we always kind of say the Chevy and the Ford. People say, we're a, we're a Medical Associates family, we want Medical Associates. When we made the change from Unity to, to Medical Associates, we had a number of employees who were, you know, saying, hey, I want to still be able to see my doctor. So, we made sure that those networks matched up as close as possible. But anytime you make a change, there's going to be some differences. Chiropractors, some people who, an independent who will take Unity insurance but won't take Medical Associates. So, we don't look just plain, here's the cheapest, we want to make sure that it's a value package. There are carriers out there, and Aetna, perhaps, who's a national carrier, who is very affordable, but they only have one chiropractor in the entire county. So, it can be really cheap for you, but nobody's going to get any value out of it, and that's certainly something we won't want to do to the employees, so.
I note that you've advised, or I assume Tricor's advised us, that we're expecting a double-digit increase in health insurance cost?
That's correct. That's correct.
And this would be because of our experience rating?
A combination of things. One, the trend, you've, anybody, you can open up any paper right now and see what's going on as far as the Affordable Care Act. There's new fees, new penalties, new fines, new taxation that's going on, all the products, as well as the entire infrastructure, and the way that they are pricing products is going to be changing. This is something, this is a six-hour conversation, but I'll cut to a couple of big things. One of the things that the federal government has said is that they're going to allow insurance companies to charge a premium for tobacco usage. So, and that, that, that premium can be up to a 50% penalty. So, let's say that you have an employee who is paying $500 for a single policy. If they are a smoker, they can now charge $750, okay? One of the things that a lot, some employers are saying is, hey, we'll, we'll be willing to pay, the county pays 90% now, or, excuse me, the city, we're willing to pay the 90%, but we're not going to pay the extra for the tobacco usage. That's something that the employee will have to pay. And I'm not saying that was a decision that anybody said, that's just some conversations that are going on. Another thing is, premiums have always been based on your claim experience. So, if you had a good year, you didn't, didn't get charged as much. They're going to something called community rating, and this is something that Tricor's not doing, the city's not doing, Dean's not doing. The federal government says, this is how you shall price insurance from this point forward. So, if you have a group of people, you have five employees, and they are all fit, they run marathons, they're living life perfectly, nobody smokes, nobody drinks, you know, we have no high blood pressure, and you take the same, you take five people with the exact same ages, same demographics, male versus female over here, and these five people are all overweight, have bad habits, all that kind of stuff, they're both going to pay the same rate going forward. That's called community rating. So, that's one of the things that's going to impact everybody. So, those are the things that we've been working through, we've been talking through on the wellness committee as far as, what are some things we can do to encourage good behavior? What are some things we can do to reward those people who, you know, are, want to make an effort to make sure they keep healthcare costs down for themselves and for everybody else? So, those are a couple of real brief things, and again, we could go on for hours about some of the nuances that's inside this and what needs to be covered and how it's going to work, but those are part of the reasons, you know. Our hope is that the, these, that your renewal comes in, you know, lower than that, but that's not the indication that we've seen. And you guys aren't alone. We're dealing with this with school boards, counties, municipalities, private employers. Everybody's going to be affected by this.
But where's the affordable part?
That's a good question. The affordable part is, there will certainly be some winners in the group, there'll be some losers in the group. Let's say a husband-and-wife farm, farmers, and they are currently paying $20,000 a year out of pocket for an individual policy that's, has a $2,000 deductible. Their income tax is showing that they aren't making a lot of money. You know, the end of the year, they buy a tractor, and they're showing that they're making $20,000 for the year. Their health insurance premiums will probably go from $20,000 a year down to $1,500 a year. So, there's going to be a significant savings for small business owners, you know, self-employed, those kind of areas, as well as there's a number of opportunities for people who aren't making a lot of money to get some federal subsidies. The problem with those federal subsidies is that everybody in this room is going to pay for part of them. One of the fees that's going to be put on the employers starting January 1st of 2014 is a reinsurance fee, and that means that every belly button, we call it, so husband, wife, and two kids, will pay four times that fee, will pay $63 a year, every year, going forward, and that rate can change. They're going to use part of that money to help subsidize other people who can't afford insurance. So, that's one example of it. There's something called a Pecori fee, which has been in place for a couple of years now, and that's just a dollar a year, but it's a dollar times everybody that's on the plan. So, those are, those are different taxes and fees that they're going to be collecting that are going to be part of your insurance that weren't in the past. So, if you look and say, hey, those are two, two and a half, 3%, you are starting the year with a 3% renewal, assuming you have no claim, perfect claims. So, you don't have perfect claims, I can tell you that. So, we have to look at medical trend. Medical trend is simply, last year something cost $100, this year it cost $110. That's a 10% trend. So, we start stacking 10% trend, demographic claim experience, everybody here got a year older, then taxes and stuff, and that's how we are unfortunately getting higher rates. And it's not real fun to deliver those either, so.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
So, is there a motion on...
I move to table.
Did you want to make it a time-specific, Ken?
No.
No? 12 days? Okay, so the motion is just a table?
Yes. The city manager said he'd want it a month, but we assume he'll make it back.
Yeah, it might take longer. I, I'm sure it'll be back, though.
I don't want to set a particular date.
All right, we'll vote. Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonan?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Motion carries. Item D is Resolution 1334, authorizing the sale of not to exceed $5 million general obligation securities. Larry?
Sure. Due to the current low interest rates, the City of Plattville is interested in refunding a 2011 note anticipation note. The total of this note is $3,950,000, but it's not due until 2015. The City of Plattville is also interested in borrowing approximately $1,020,000 for 2014 improvements to be made to the land on East Side Road that was purchased as part of Tiff District Number Six. The total amount of these two loans, plus issuance expenses, would be approximately $5 million, excuse me, would be $5 million. The refunding of the 2011 loan will be paid from the debt, from the debt service fund, as it has in the past, and the improvements to Tiff District Number Six will be paid from Tiff District Number Four, taxes paid, as per the recent amendments to the Tiff districts. So, when we amended the Tiff districts, we anticipated making improvements to the land that we purchased on East Side Road, and this borrowing would help fund those improvements, as well as refund the 2011 debt. And I know this came up at our last council meeting, and I misspoke initially, and then we tried to correct it, so I apologize for that.
Okay, this is the one I was going to jump in on earlier, Larry. Thank you. The $1,020,000 that we're looking at here, what improvements?
Well, initially, we've got about 35 acres, and before development can occur on it, we're going to have to look at where the street layout goes, but most importantly, we're going to plan to spend the money on stormwater improvements first. If we get the sites development ready, they'll be more likely to become attractive development sites to industrial customers.
That's the one that you were talking about, the stormwater drainage area for the well?
No.
Up in that area?
Nope, that's a different site.
That's a different one?
Yep, that's just south of, I guess it's just north of the water tower, just down the hill. That's in the existing Tiff District Number Six, that's already in a development area, and it would serve, I believe, the property, well, the undeveloped property of Harms to the east, and then underneath the water tower, L&amp;M, and some other vacant lots. So, that's another stormwater project that we're going to have to look at in the near future as, as things start to develop out there.
Well, that was mostly spoken about when we were talking about the expansion that may take place out there in Industrial Park, correct?
Yeah, at some point, we anticipate existing businesses like L&amp;M, for example, will want to expand. They've bought additional land with the anticipation of expanding, so when a development occurs on vacant land, or when L&amp;M expands, we will look to make stormwater improvements in that area.
But wouldn't it be more advantageous just to borrow the $3,950,000 right now and worry about the other later? Because right now, there's nothing out there as far as, you don't have anything in writing that somebody wants to develop out there, you don't have any guarantees of anything yet.
Right.
So, and yes, you also, I know you get a charge both times for bond, for money, but we might not have to do this for a long time.
All of those are, are good points. The City of Plattville is in a bit of a unique position in that we amended our Tiff districts to provide for this expense. If you look at Tiff District Number Four, it's providing more funding than what is necessary to pay for the expenses in Tiff Four, and so at the time when the Tiff plans were amended, it was anticipated that the funding from Tiff Four would be used to support an improvement in Tiff Six that will lead to greater development in Tiff Six, and ultimately reverse Tiff Six's prospectus.
But when we do that, doesn't that also extend the length of period of time that the other Tiff Four would have to be out there instead of finalizing if we take money out of that?
If you take money out of Tiff Four, what we, yes and no, to answer your question. The answer is yes, it would, Tiff Four has a certain lifespan that it's allotted, and so we would use that complete lifespan. But no, in that we had anticipated using the entire lifespan of that Tiff and moving that fund, those funds downtown to Tiff Seven to help pay for our downtown Tiff. And under the most recent amendments to the Tiff plans, we simply shifted that expense to Tiff Six now to help get this land developed and ready to go.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a question about the $1,020,000 also. Do, it says for 2014 improvements, those have not been included in our CIP, correct?
That is correct.
And so, will we see the budget for that?
It is in the budget, it is not in the CIP because, number one, we don't have the funds, so I don't know that the city council's going to vote for this yet. If you vote for it and approve it, then we will add it to the budget because we anticipate the CIP plan will be, also be approved at the same time tonight.
What are the improvements? Water and sewer, curb and gutter?
We're anticipating stormwater.
Just stormwater?
But a whole million?
Very close.
At a million dollars?
Yep, for 39 acres. If you take a look at the stormwater pond that was put in as part of the EDA grant, that would be a comparable in my mind. I know, I think I saw Ed, Ed White here. If I can call on Ed, he would know how much that cost.
It was half a.
Oh, Howard, excuse me.
Yeah, it was, it was.
Was that a million, or less?
No, it was less than that.
With the grants or without?
No, that was, including the grant.
Okay.
I think it was a half, half million, 600,000.
If we're, if we're fortunate.
It was, it was for 20 acres, or something like that.
Okay. We still have significant public improvements to make on that site. We've got to get all the streets in and provide the, the electrical and move the power lines.
But we don't have a plan right now, is what I hear.
That's correct, right. We have the opportunity where if we don't borrow it right now, we won't have that opportunity next year under the TIF plan. You have an expenditure period, and that expenditure period comes to an end.
Comes to an end.
So we have to borrow it in 2013, and we're going to be meeting with Delta Three Engineering to plan out the stormwater and the, the improvements to the site.
Okay, I make a motion, we adopt Resolution 1334 authorizing the sale not to exceed $5 million of general obligation securities. We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
No.
Motion carries.
Item E, Resolution 1335 authorizing the sale of not to exceed $1,070,000 general obligation securities. Larry?
This is a borrowing that is necessary in order to pay for the purchase of the land that we are approving in the past resolution. If both of these go forward, I anticipate our bond advisor will be here at our next meeting to give us the results of the two sales.
Any questions?
Will this, go ahead, Barb.
Yeah, why, why can't, why wouldn't it have just been one $6 million sale?
I don't know the answer to that. Duane, do you have an answer?
Yeah.
That's a good question. I, I'm sure the bond advisor has a very good reason, I just don't know what it is offhand.
Larry, does any of this affect our total ability to borrow on our?
Well, in the last resolution, the 3.9 is refinancing, so that's already included in it. Under the new one, the 1.4 would impact, that is general obligation debt, so that would impact our debt limits. I'm sorry, I, I don't know the answer to that, Barb.
Well, we've made a commitment to buy this land, so I make a motion, we approve Resolution 1335 authorizing the sale not to exceed $1,070,000 for general obligation securities to purchase 39 acres. Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, and perhaps that question that was asked about why it's not one borrow instead of two? Obviously, our financial advisor could give us some information on that.
I'll make sure he has it with him.
Okay. All right, we'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We have in our packet the capital improvement plan for 2014 through 2018. We had a couple of discussion nights on this, and the question is about approving it this evening. It's, it's a plan, and that's exactly what, what it is. It says this is what we're thinking about doing in 2014, 15, 16, 17, 18, and we will address it as the year goes on. So, is there a motion or discussion?
I have a question.
All right.
City manager said he was asked to follow up on two issues, report on the departments that lease storage space. So I assume he made the decision not to build.
Based on the public, Director of Public Works' staff note, I believe that that is the, the decision. Staff would like to recommend that it get delayed a year or two.
So it's cheaper to rent than to build?
Not necessarily, but at this point, I think that, I think it's better for us to defer that at least a year or two, and see how the, see how the rental space goes, see what the prices are, and, and things like that.
That, that has not been removed from the documents in front of us.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Because I, I didn't make that decision, that's to the city council. I, if you read the staff note, I did recommend that the motion that you make approves the CIP without the building, so that the final copy of the CIP would not include the building.
But the $95,000?
Yes.
Yeah. The other one was about the replacement, the, of a police car. There was questions raised about the replacement of a police car. So the police, so help, I see our chief is here, so perhaps you can talk about these police cars.
Sure. We typically replace at 100,000 miles, which was increased, boy, probably seven years ago or so, from 80,000 miles. In order to accommodate this, we've tried to seek out extended warranties, because at 100,000 miles, given city mileage, those vehicles are pretty well spent. And typically, we make a practice of turning those vehicles over to other city departments, so that if we get a good running vehicle, we try and extend the life of it by running it a little bit longer for our purposes, and/or turning it over to other city departments.
So you're seeking both a squad car replacement this year and the mid-size SUV replacement?
Correct.
So what is the mileage on these vehicles? When were they purchased?
I don't even have that right in front of me.
But we did change policy then, right? I, I couldn't remember, I know we talked about it during budget discussions several years ago, Councilor Becker had brought up the idea of.
He asked for a replacement cycle, and typically, it's about three to three and a half years for a vehicle, a little bit longer for the SUVs, because we only run those typically in inclement weather, or when the other vehicles are not in operation, due to being repaired or whatnot.
So the 100,000 just refers to the squad cars, then, Doug?
Typically, yes. I mean, like the CSO truck, the Community Service Officer truck, we've had that since 2001. We run those significantly longer.
Any mechanical problems taking them to 100,000?
They're pretty well spent by the time that.
They get to 100?
Yes. Again, due to the city mileage and a lot of slower speed driving and idling and whatnot.
So the SUV is to replace one of the CSO trucks?
No, that's, that is a replacement squad, it would be.
Is that replacing the Ford Explorer, or the Expedition?
The Expedition.
Yeah.
Other questions?
We can assume that these vehicles are, any replacement is consistent with the policy, that the mileage will at least be $100,000, 100,000 miles.
Correct. Some will be in excess of that.
I have, you know, we have discussed at work sessions, and several times, the expenditures in the 2014 CIP. We have not done similar with the 15, 16, 17, and 18. And while I understand, as Council President, that this is a plan, and it does not signify that these are approved expenditures, I do note that in the 2015 plan, a thing that we have not discussed is the purchase of a third ambulance, and, for $250,000. And I would point out that I am opposed to that because we have no location for a third ambulance, nor any plan to add a location for a third ambulance. So I, while this may be a plan, I think that's an unrealistic inclusion in the plan.
Is there a motion anywhere in that?
I thought you were just asking for comments right now.
Anybody else like to comment on Barb's comment, because otherwise, I'd like to move this along. We have a plan.
Barb, what, what are you saying? Which, which one of the police department vehicles have anything to do with the ambulance?
None. That was another, that's a different question, the ambulance.
I think her point is that the plan is from 2014 to 18, and if we accept the plan, we're in essence saying that 15, 16, 17, 18, all the expenditures, proposed expenditures in there are then considered part of the plan. And she personally is, is not, at this point, in favor of purchasing a third ambulance. We have two, getting a new one this year, because we don't have a space for it, for one thing. So I think the question is, why keep it in the plan if?
One of the things you don't see, one of the things you don't see on the plan is the 2013 expenses for this year, and in 2013, we had money budgeted for a new EMS garage. Given the plan for a new EMS garage, it would make sense that we would add the third ambulance after the garage is constructed. Given the new scenario, I'm not sure that that's still applicable, so it would make sense to delay it.
Well, it could be argued next year. I would go ahead and make a motion to approve the 2014, 2018 capital improvement plan without the Department of Public Works building.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second, and we'll vote.
Doss?
No.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
No.
Motion carries.
Next item, University of Wisconsin Platteville bus stop signs. Howard, do you want to just refresh your memory on this?
Okay, last time Amy Seeboth was here, talking about asking permission to put bus stop signs at different locations, specifically on city streets next to different locations, for example, next to Indian Park, as an example. Wherever we can, we would attach these to existing signposts. These are not regulatory bus stops where, where people are not allowed to park. The idea here is to identify it for community members so that they know that this is generally where the bus will stop to pick a person up, and hopefully encourage ridership by community people, as well as university people. I don't have a problem with these, working with them. The university would reimburse the city for the cost of putting in additional posts or, or things as necessary.
Who does the installing?
The city would do the installing, and as I said, the university would reimburse us for all of our costs.
For all the labor.
For the labor and any posts and hardware if needed. They would provide the, the signs themselves.
Any other questions?
I make a motion to approve the UTE Platteville bus stop signs.
As recommended.
As recommended.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next item is renaming tractor pull area the Dale Rupp Memorial Track. Howard?
Thank you. Dairy Days has recommended that the tractor pull area be named the Dale Rupp Memorial Track. There is a closed statement from the president of Dairy Days, Mr. Chris Miller, as justification for this. Staff published the request for comments. We have received a bunch of comments, and a lot of them are in your, and they're all in your packet. Most of them are very much in favor of the, of this. There was one negative comment, and they talked about potential illegal activities. We were, staff looked it up and was not able to find any evidence of such thing, so I would just recommend you give it whatever consideration or weight. The Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee did in fact make a final recommendation to approve this, to approve this request. We did have a letter that we request, review the poll. The poll had 402 votes, 143 for, 246 against, at the southwestnews4u.com site, an unscientific poll, but, and then there was one letter that is included in the packet that was not available regarding naming the event. That's something that you may have to discuss with Dairy Days, but I did a, a request to the Parks, Forestry, and Recreation Committee to see if they wanted a new meeting to discuss this and potentially change their, their recommendation, and they did not want to have another meeting. So their recommendation remains the same, to name this Dale, Dale Rupp Memorial Track.
We do have one person who's asked to speak, Ed White.
Ed White, 295 to Burlane, Platteville. I'm currently the treasurer of Dairy Days, been involved for 20 years, and Dale Rupp had been involved nearly all those years. Two people were primarily responsible for bringing the tractor pull back to Dairy Days. There used to be an event, and then it went away for a while. Gary Leffeholtz, who's in the audience tonight, and Mr. Dale Rupp. What most people don't realize is the amount of work that goes into that, not just the night of the event. Any of you who have worked on fundraising events knows that from what you see at the event, there's dozens of hours spent before and after. So these guys have made an effort to go out and raise funds, do a lot of stuff. After about four or five years of the tractor pull, which is a Dairy Days event, it's our event, and so the money that is raised goes to Dairy Days, Inc. And this has been one of our primary sources of revenue, and because of that, we stopped charging admission for our evening entertainment, our bands. Most of Dairy Days is free because of things, the efforts of Mr. Rupp and, and Mr. Leffeholtz, and so that alone, if nothing else, nobody sees, right? So I would highly recommend that, you know, we do this. It was listed as a renaming, it was not named, so it is just a naming of the track. It's not like we're taking the name away from somebody. So if you had any questions, I'm just here to answer them.
Where would the sign be? Where are you going to post the sign?
Well, once again, at the encouragement of Dale and others, we actually built an announcing stand on the track. If you've been up there lately, there's a nice enclosed announcing stand, and so it would go across the front of, of that.
Ed, I know that we can't envision this ever happening, but perhaps someday, some, there won't be tractors or tractor pulls. I have no idea. It seems like a far-fetched thing. One of, one of the concerns raised is if you name this area, and you have this public park, and then somebody wants to reconfigure the park.
Heaven forbid.
I know, change. Heaven forbid we would reconfigure. Will there be a lot of distress, reluctance, and otherwise fear, because a portion of this is named, and therefore, it's untouchable?
Well, I would ask the same about the Woodward Field, Chamberlain Field, Abingfield, the Terrell Sports Complex. You know, so, you know, a lot of stuff is named in this city, and a lot of stuff is named at Legion Park, and so the same thing could happen. The answer would be, we wouldn't want to see that happen. I don't foresee it happening. I'll probably be long gone before tractor pulls aren't popular in this part of the country. It is the biggest event we run, you know, there, by our accounts, about 850 people in attendance at that single event, so.
Ed, was there any thought given to maybe naming the tractor pull, Dale Rupp Tractor Pull?
No, we didn't.
Instead of a piece of ground?
Right. It, it came up, but we're already in this process, and that's the way we started, that was the way we're proceeding. If the council chose not to. That was the way we're proceeding. If the council chose not to name it, that would be an alternative, but we're hoping you choose, you know, to name it as a permanent.
I meant the tractor pull would be a permanent name, you know what I mean?
Right. It'd be the Dale Rupp Memorial Tractor Pull, but that only happens three days a year, whereas the permanent naming gives him recognition year round, anybody that's up.
Thank you.
Other questions? Thanks, Ed.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff, for any of the council people? Otherwise, we will look at a motion.
Well, I did not know the gentleman. Based on Ed's recommendation and other people that, that wrote letters that are included in the packet, I will make a motion to approve that the name of the facility at Legion Park, he called the Dale Rupp Memorial Track.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. We'll vote. Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next item, set a public hearing for October 8th to discontinue a portion of Hare Street.
Go ahead. Now, seeing everybody has a question, I can.
Anybody have a question?
Just to have a public hearing, right?
Correct.
All right, we need a motion.
Move to set the public hearing for October 8th.
Second.
We'll vote.
Das?
Yes.
Stackhausen?
Yes.
Bonin?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Nichols?
Yes.
Steiner?
Yes.
Den?
Yes.
Motion carries. Next is information and discussion items, ordinance amending the official traffic map, no parking on Calhoun Drive. And I would note, we do have two individuals who would like to speak on this. So I think, Howard, do you want to just give us a brief overview again?
Sure. There is a petition from Dr. Smith to change the official traffic map. Our original ordinance from last year said that we would designate Calhoun Drive as no parking and because of its proximity to Roundtree Commons, Dr. Smith and others are asking that we remove that restriction. So all we're proposing in the, in the ordinance would be to repeal that portion of ordinance 12-02. It would then render the parking under the default condition under our city ordinances, allowing parking up to 48 hours. According to Dr. Smith, there are covenants that prohibit overnight parking. We do not have authority to enforce a, a covenant, but that's, that would be up to the owners. So our staff's recommendation would be adopt the ordinance to repeal that portion of ordinance 12-02.
And could we not add then to adopt no overnight parking?
That would be up to you.
Then we would be able to enforce that?
Yes.
All right, we have Beth Smith. If you will come to the microphone, please, and give your name and your comments.
Thank you. I'm Beth Smith. I live at 1040 Calhoun Drive. And first of all, thank you for your willingness to consider this. We have lived on that address for four years and up until a year ago, it was gravel, so nobody bothered about it. And parking has never been a problem. But when the ordinances were brought in that no one could park on Ready Drive, all of a sudden it did become an issue. And some of the people who have signed the petition are our immediate neighbors who are not happy that they cannot park on Ready Drive. But if you could park on Calhoun Drive, that would go somewhat towards assaging the inconvenience of not being able to park in front of their houses. Another thing that some of the people who signed the petition are dear people who come to our house regularly on a weekly basis. And three of the couples who signed the petition have significant mobility problems. So not being able to park on Calhoun would be very much a disadvantage for them. And like I said, we've been there for four years and I don't know that I've ever seen anybody park overnight. And we're the only house that faces Calhoun, so it's kind of a non-issue why there would have to be no parking there anyway, because nobody does park, except for short-term. Thank you so much.
What's your, what's your address again? On Calhoun?
It, it's 10-4, 1-1-0-4-0. And we're the only house on Calhoun Drive.
Thank you. We also have Shirley Eberline, who would like to speak to this issue?
Hello, I am Shirley Eberline and I live at 1105 Ready Drive. And I was totally unaware of this issue until I received a letter from Howard. And I had, did not know about the issue. And the, my concern about it is that the Smiths are the only people that live on the drive. And so that is a non-developed street. And so for, as far as future is concerned, is this a good thing to establish for a street where only one person lives, all right? That's serving their needs for a specific meeting, right? Am I correct? For, for a special meeting.
Shirley, I'm sorry, could you just address the council?
Oh, all right. All right. So, all right. That was my concern. Plus the fact, the other thing as far as the future is concerned, Manhole Drive has been finished. And now, then would there be an issue with permitting parking on that in the future? Because it's highly visible. So that's my concern. I'm just learning about it. And I know there are several neighbors you said that were concerned about their, not being able to park on Ready Drive. But I didn't understand the issues of, of the no parking that some people must have experienced. But I don't, I mean, some of your people that you signed, that signed the petition are not neighborhood people. And I don't know if the greater neighborhood number of people would be encouraging this no parking. So that's my concern. So I'm, I'm learning about it and I've talked with Ken and I've talked with Howard and I talked with the police chief. So that was my initial concern was that, are we establishing a no parking for a street that where there's just one house and then there's, the rest of it is not developed yet, but it does intersect with the new street? So that's my just future concern. Is this something that we should go ahead with or, or should we just consider it further? Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff right now?
I do have a question. I know Calhoun Drive was finished. Does Manju, Manjo?
Menage.
Menage?
Menage or whatever. Does that come down to Ready Drive or is there a?
Yes.
Yes.
So on the map that we have, it shows a cul-de-sac. It shows two cul-de-sacs, I believe, on the map that we were provided?
No. Menage Drive intersects Ready Drive to the north and intersects Calhoun Drive to the south.
Okay.
Menage Drive is constructed from Ready to Calhoun. It's done in its entirety. That portion of Calhoun Drive from Ready Drive to Menage Drive is also constructed. That was, that was just recently built and, and paved by the developer, O N S Investments.
So the map we have is out of date, is what I'm hearing? Because I have, on my map, there's X's and it says not built.
The, the portion of Calhoun Drive, east of Menage Drive, and then that cul-de-sac is called Amar Drive, that portion is currently not built. The portion from Ready Drive to Menage is built. Just those, just that little portion from Menage, east to the Little Knuckle and then north along what they, what's called Amar Drive.
Could you, could you provide an updated map, please? I, I mean, I don't think I have an up-to-date. Or maybe?
The area with the X's is to the east and that's not constructed.
All right, I see where you are. I see where you are.
Okay.
So those two streets are done, but then Calhoun on to the east is not done? Or is it done?
You are correct. The initial statement is correct.
Is not done.
Calhoun is not done.
Okay.
From Menage Drive east.
Okay. All right.
Why it says not built?
Where it says not built.
Correct.
Wiped the dust off.
Any other questions on that?
Are we going to end up piecemealing this whole subdivision as far as parking? Are we going to go from Ready Drive to Manju? Explain that. That whole Cadillac Drive is, are we going to, what I'm trying to say? Piecemeal these requests?
Good question.
Because I personally ha, will have a question to bring to this council regarding Ready Drive, where it intersects with Chestnut Street in the future. So my question will be, are we going to have to piecemeal our parking restrictions throughout this subdivision?
Well, they have covenants for the parking.
But we also have. Maybe it would be helpful if we had a map of the whole area, Howard, showing current parking.
The, that.
I'm totally confused.
That circle that you're.
Well, we're talking about Ready and we're talking about Cadillac and we're talking about Menage, that kind of whole area.
Kamla Court.
Kamla Court. Yeah.
Okay.
So do those, do those streets have the same sign, the no parking that the Smiths requested to have removed?
So.
I don't know how the, how the residents feel about the no parking.
According to ordinance 12-02, there is no parking on Kamla Court, Ready Drive, Menage Drive. Calhoun Drive. So until just recently, Calhoun and Menage Drive were not completed, so we did not install signs there. Now that they're completed, we were preparing to install signs and we've held off on installing the signs on Calhoun pending this action.
Where does the signage stop as far as no parking anytime on Ready Drive?
Right now, it stops at, it stops at Cadillac Drive.
Cadillac, okay.
Any other questions? All right, moving on. The next information item, resolution amending the City of Platteville's employee handbook, employee residency requirements. Questions on that, comments on that?
This was, it was discussed at our last meeting, that paragraph D be added to the resolution identifying the emergency services personnel that are impacted from the emergency operations plan. And so you'll see that I did list the employees referenced in the emergency operations plan that the city council would like to limit under the state law. Is there any corrections or changes you'd like to see?
Larry, I just got the rest of my information that I was looking at on here, because if you, I mentioned I wanted to see it stay the same in our handbook. But what I found out was if the law, the law went through, okay, and Milwaukee is challenging it, but since they did not bring an injunction against the law, then the law has to be changed. So we have to change it in our handbook, okay? But the one good thing about this is we can negotiate. So when, anytime a city or community or anybody else hires someone, they have the right to negotiate that they live within the res, the city that they work for. So I just, I had asked ex-Judge Curry to help me out. He called a bunch of friends and asked for how this whole thing was going to go down and that's the information he brought me back. So with that in mind, because you said there would be some hiring coming up, we have the right to negotiate and we have the right to require them through the negotiations to live in the community where they work. So just be aware of that. That is, that's for real.
I, I understand that you've referred to a former judge to get that opinion. Perhaps we could get.
I asked him to do the research for me and he contacted a few of his friends to get the correct information for me.
I, I guess if I were to advise the city council, if you are interested in pursuing that, I would like us to get an opinion from our city attorney.
That's quite all right.
If, if that's the avenue you want to go. I, I guess when I read the state statutes, I reached a different conclusion than your research. And that doesn't mean that I'm right or wrong or that you're right or wrong. It just means that I think we might want to get a city attorney who is obligated to defend us if we are wrong.
That's fine. It's only a right to negotiate.
All right.
Yes. That's what I'd like to see you do.
A question I have is, did the attorney you consult put, put their opinion in writing and explain it?
I could probably get that.
I mean, that's, that would be.
But go ahead. Brian, I'd appreciate, I'd appreciate your opinion.
And I, I thank you for that. But so I was just wondering if they put it in writing so that there would be not only the conclusion, but the process that they followed in order to reach that?
Sure.
And if it's in writing, I'd like to see it. If it's not, then, okay, I understand.
I will ask. I'll do that tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think, is the will of the council to have our attorney also review it?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry.
Brian, have you looked at any of this yet that where you could give us some voice right now?
I have looked at this, at the revised state statute. I have read a league, sort of the, the first shot out of the barrel for the league of municipalities. I listened to what Mr. Den said in, in terms of his understanding of what the lawyer said his opinion was. And it, it's a pretty fine line to say you can't use residency as an employment requirement, but still say you have to negotiate over it and I'm not going to let you have this job if you don't agree to live in my city.
Right.
So I mean, if that's the hair we're splitting, I'm not seeing it. And at least at this point. So if, that would be my first blush, you know, response to your question.
Thank you.
Okay. So Brian, if you would research that a little further, I think that's the will of the council then.
Thank you.
Would you like that in information and discussion at your next meeting?
Yeah.
Yes.
If it were to take not two weeks, but three weeks in order to generate that opinion, would that be all right?
Yes, sure.
Thank you.
Resolution adopting the Grant County All Hazards Mitigation Plan, that's in your packet. As I understand it, it was a rather lengthy document. So we have a summary that pertains to Platteville in particular.
Yep. And I also included the letter that we received from Grant County as the last page in that section. I have asked EMS Director Brian Allen to review the plan and he will be at your next meeting if anyone has questions for him. The plan is also on our website if you'd like to take a look. And we will print off copies if a council member would like to see a copy of it on paper. But it is, I believe, 125 pages, so.
All right. Resolution adopting the City of Platteville's 2014 fee schedule.
Yes. Several months ago, the city council adopted an ordinance removing a lot of our fees, the dollar amounts from our city code, so that we could review our fee schedule on an annual basis and make changes via a resolution instead of an ordinance. Before you is the 2013 review of the fees the city charges. In one column, you'll see our 2013 fee. In the next column, you'll see what the city manager is proposing. Obviously, you know, if you would like to make changes or want to suggest that we look at a different item that hasn't been looked at, I'd be happy to do so. One fee that I think is worth noting is the rental license. is the rental license fee. If you look under the building inspections department, you'll see that the rental license fee is one that I have proposed an increase to. It's, and of course, now I can't find it.
Good.
There it is. In 2013, it was $90, and I'm proposing that next year it be increased to $115. And that is a three-year license. So, it's an increase of $25 over a three-year period. Excuse me. The one fee covers three years.
When was the last time that was raised, you know, Larry?
I don't know. Joe, do you know?
It was before 2008. I know that. I don't know exactly.
Is it not, isn't our rental inspection and licensing program supposed to be revenue-neutral? Isn't the revenue that's being generated by licenses supposed to be paying?
Yes, and it is.
Be associated with the rental inspection?
The answer is yes, and it is.
And it is. So, this would then make this a revenue stream?
Well, yes. We don't have income coming in to support the staff time that's necessary to assist with the program. So, you're paying for MV services to do the inspections, but the city is not being reimbursed for any of its staff time associated with the program.
And do we have an estimate of that amount of time?
I'm estimating $25 over a three-year period per license. So, the answer is, we haven't...
The answer is no.
We haven't conducted a study, no.
The answer is no.
Any other questions?
I could, I do have a, another question, and it doesn't necessarily pertain to this. It indirectly pertains to that, and that is, where are we in the rental inspection license? In what year are we with the contractor?
Do you know what I'm saying?
No, I don't know what I'm saying.
But it's, it's a new contract.
Why don't we get back to you at our next meeting on that?
Okay. That would be good. And, you know, there are some new councilmen. They perhaps would even like to see that contract.
Okay.
Yes, I would. Thank you.
Grant County Highway Construction Aids. Next item for information.
Yeah. This is an annual thing. We put in $2,000 in escrow. The Grant County matches that. When a project is complete, we receive the entire 4,000 set in escrow. We've done this for many years now. And so, this is the time when we do our request for 2014. And so, I'm recommending approval of that at our next meeting.
Any discussion? All right. ALS Intercept Agreement.
ALS is the, the level of service that our EMTs provide. It's advanced life support. And what has happened is, we've gone from a basic EMS to an ALS EMS. Basically, we're one level above the basic service level. And what has happened is, several of our neighboring EMS services are not at the ALS level of service. So, by providing an advanced, advanced level of service, we can treat patients more advanced than what they can. So, they are relying on us to handle some situations that we otherwise were not handling. This would be an agreement that we would like created between us and any neighboring community that wants to use our service to ensure that the city is properly reimbursed for any, any equipment, any fees, any, any funds associated with the transport costs. Brian Allen could not be here this evening, and I've asked for him to be at our next meeting to explain it to you, if you have questions.
All right. If you have questions, you can certainly forward them to Larry for Brian as well before the meeting.
Larry, one real quick one. When you talk about the ALS, is that like EMS, A, B, C, different ratings for, because there are different ratings in EMS?
I think it starts off at basic.
Training levels.
Advanced level, it starts off at basic, then it goes to ALS or advanced life support.
Okay.
And then it goes to paramedic level.
Okay.
And we're at the ALS level.
Okay.
Other questions? Next item is the CenturyLink property. Larry?
Yep. The City of Platteville was contacted by CenturyLink and asked if we were interested in purchasing a piece of property that they own. The property is on the corner of Fourth and Furnace Street. It's currently used as a parking lot. And I apologize, there were some documents, basically some maps, that were to be included in your packet, and I've set them on your spot in front of you. It looks like this. They're basically a series of maps pointing out where the parking lot is located and how many parking stalls are in it. I believe there are 18 parking stalls in the lot. If the city council is interested in purchasing this lot from CenturyLink, I will need further direction from you. And I would advise that we do that in a closed session meeting at our next city council meeting.
Is it interest in discussing this?
I would like to explore it.
I would too, but I'm, I'm a little confused by the other document that we got. It appears that no tax is being paid on this piece of property.
Well, that is true, and it's not true. Public utilities pay their tax directly to the state, is what I understand. There are not property taxes associated to the utilities.
And can we find out how much tax they're paying to the state? This is another one of these...
I don't know. I will look that up and see if I can get that information from the state.
Any other questions? If not, that concludes our information and discussion items. So, and by the way, yes to your answer of closed session.
Okay.
Next meeting. We will go into a work session where we'll have a discussion with the Grant County Sheriff and Dispatch Services, and also the EMS services update. So, thank you all very much. That concludes our televised portion. We'll take a five-minute break. Or three minutes. We're a long day.